Okay, thank you all for coming. We call this meeting to order. Please join me on the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for the record, council is present with the exception of Councilmember Brenda Kenzer, who is ill this evening. I entertain a motion to excuse her absence.
So moved.
Motion was made by Councilmember Judith Thunley and seconded by Councilmember Olenly to excuse Brenda Kenzer's absence. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, we should unanimously. Next up is our consent calendar, items A through I.
Mayor, I move that we... Sorry. I don't know if we can make a discussion, have a discussion?
Do you want some pulled off?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. No, just, we're to consent calendar.
Okay. I move that we approve consent calendar, items A through I. Second?
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Cornigan, seconded by Councilmember Johnson to approve the consent calendar, items A through I. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And that carries unanimously. So, now we are to our public comment period. Most of you have been here before, but I'll just briefly restate the rules. Come up to the podium, one at a time, state your name and residence for the record, please. Limit your comments to three minutes, and please be advised that you're addressing the council, and it's not a question and answer period. Mr. Anderson?
Actually, good evening. In accordance with the precedent set by the Sidro-Woolley City Council on February 2016...
Are you pleased to have your name and address?
I'm getting to that, please don't disturb me. By allowing Sylvia Matteran to present her own as well as Susan Trout's views on the same evening, I am presenting my wife, Mary Anderson's, views to you tonight, since you couldn't be here because of work, and reserving the right to present my own as well. Her name is Mary Anderson, and she lives at 928 Beachley Road, and she writes the following: "It is gratifying to hear that my concerns about the signage for Sidro-Woolley were investigated by city council members, and I was discovered to be right. It brings hope that perhaps my concerns about the library giveaway will also be investigated by the city council members, and I will be found to be right about that as well. However, it is dismaying to learn that while the city council is willing to spend $50,000 on Mount Vernon's new YMCA, they are not willing to spend $55,000 on their own seniors to install the much-needed air conditioning for our seniors. That seems a crying shame. It seems to imply that our city council values Mount Vernon's residents of all ages above our own senior citizens. The issue of reciprocity for the Central Skagit Library users is before you tonight. Reciprocity means a mutual change of privileges. I can see the benefit to Central Skagit Library users. They will have access to our over 60,000 item collection. That would be a nice privilege. But where is the reciprocity for Sidro-Woolley citizens? Central Skagit Library is in its fledging stages. It has virtually nothing to offer us. Access to Hoopla, a downloadable movie site, they have few books, little space, not much in the way of computers, and the same websites available to Sidro-Woolley citizens now at our own library. How will any of that benefit our citizens? On the contrary, Burlington and Mount Vernon have refused reciprocity for Central Skagit Library because it has nothing to offer the citizens of Mount Vernon or Burlington, and their city officials recognize that. If reciprocity is granted to Central Skagit Library tonight, it will be detrimental to the citizens of Sidro-Woolley. The books we have paid for will be checked out to users not funding our library. That means fewer books and longer waits for our citizens. It will be an unfunded mandate. Do not be misled. The benefit is all for Central Skagit Library, and none for the citizens of Sidro-Woolley. If you vote for it, you will be voting against the best interests of your own citizens. And just so you are aware, all the Central Skagit Library users have already been informed that this is a done deal, and they are already coming into the Sidro-Woolley Public Library demanding their reciprocity cards. That's even before you vote tonight. You are apparently perceived as being so completely in the pocket of the mayor that you have no mind of your own. I can't believe that's true. Personally, I think it's true. I hope you will prove me right and vote for your citizens tonight, and against reciprocity, an unfunded mandate. Thank you for listening, and I wish you all a happy Easter.
Thank you. So do you want to take your time now, or are you reserving it for later?
I reserve it for later.
Okay, thank you.
It has to be something that I'm...
It's fine. Next, please.
Good evening. Loretta Saranen, 821 Park Cottage Place. I am a supporter and user of libraries. The more libraries, the better. I support our city library being retained by the city. In the beginning, our library was started by a grassroots citizen's effort. No taxpayers were involved. The library was sourced and operational when it was entrusted to the city. The library is a working legacy that has been left to us by previous generations. Today, with corporate messaging in all aspects of our lives, fake news, public relations pieces passing as journalism, and the influence of corporations on our government, libraries are citizens and democracy's first line of defense. Our library is a resource that never can be recreated if lost. It holds the DNA of our community. For those who have been enchanted by technology, now we know its pitfalls. Information is deleted, manipulated, and access is mainly provided by corporations. Libraries keep our community and national knowledge resources secure. For me and many others, we've recently had experiences that caused us to question elected officials. The chief duty of those who are elected to represent us is to consider thoughtfully all the aspects of a decision, to gauge the full impact of the decision on the community and its future, and a careful consideration of constituents at all times and under all circumstances. The proposed merger of our library makes me question why our city council thinks it's desirable or necessary. One of the reasons for the merger is to serve those outside the city. This is a moot point, because Skagit Central is serving those individuals now. Promised is a larger building, more and newer technology. This sounds like a marketing pitch with no tangible evidence or results provided. I know why Skagit Central wants to merge. They get our library free, for free, absolutely. Love the word "free." City taxpayers will provide the bond to build, to build the building that Skagit Central can't obtain on his own. Why the city council supports this is a mystery to me. Representative Larson was in this room a few weeks ago, talking to us, his constituents, answering questions, getting the pulse of the people, researches. He was open to ideas, suggestions for, to resolve public policies and issues. He knows that there is more than one way to accomplish public goals, and there is no greater resource than us, the constituents. Here I stand, I'm talking to a wall of silence, a choice made by our city council, and I wonder why. Why, one of the successful models of democratic governments are based on dialogue, personal interaction, and developing relationship with those you serve. And I hope to see our elected representatives and our community at the library and interacting with us, because I think you'll find that we have some excellent ideas, and here's to our library and its long and healthy future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Julian?
Mark and Lynn, you're gonna love this stuff. Anyways, Julian Pavici, 519 Sapper Road, Sidro-Woolley, self spoken. Do I need to tell you anything else?
Okay, that's it.
Oh, okay, fine. Anyways, it's amazing how things happen sometimes, just when you think everything is not gonna work out right, damned if it doesn't work out right. Anyways, I've been complaining for a long time about speeders on Sapper Road. And zap, where did they decide to put their counters? In front of my house! Who could ask for anything more? So, I got it for you, Linda. The job's been all done, pretty much, except for the part that you have to do, but traffic counts, speeds, all that stuff, and it's kind of interesting why I save a couple of moments here, Mark, it might make more sense to you, but on the three-day traffic count, there were 2,727 cars that went past my house. Doesn't mean much to you, might mean a lot to you, Mark, but, you know, you'll be able to figure that stuff out. But the other thing is, 25 mile per hour speed limit, alright? Forty-six and a half percent of the people are exceeding the speed limit. I don't know all the statistics, but that seems like an awful lot to me. And the top speed on those three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, which is the standard, I guess we do that everywhere, that stayed the same, 40 miles per hour was the top speed on all three days. But, psychology, and I hope you guys use some psychology here, because I noticed that the amount of people that were speeding decreased. The first was like 51, then it went down to 46, and then it went down to 43 on the third day. And I imagine if those rubber strips had been across the road any longer, it might have gone down more. So, an indicator of something, when people see these black things going in across the street, they usually wonder what's going on. So, even if nothing else were to be done, and I hope not, all those rubber things across the road, sometimes it'll slow people down, you know, it gets the effect. And, but the other thing is, like I said, I'm 143 feet away from a four-way stop, okay? I'm not talking the middle of Sapper Road or the middle of North Reed. I'm 143 feet away. So the people heading east on Sapper Road have already exceeded 25 miles per hour in that 143 feet, and the people heading west are exceeding that speed, and they're usually the ones who roll through the stop sign, you know, because if you're going fast, you know, in that 143 feet without hitting your brakes, you know, you gotta slow down. And another thing I had done a long time ago, the speed limit sign is 100 feet from the intersection, and it's two-sided. Before the old guy retired, I got him to put two signs on there, and you guys have been taking care of it ever since then. So, you know who I am, you know how to get a hold of me, I'm not going anywhere's. I'll give you this one piece of paper. Who should I give this one piece of paper to? Marky, you got stuck. Other than that, do you guys have any questions or something?
I do have a question. You said 2,700 cars was the count?
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven. That's for three days.
That's for three days, okay, thanks.
Yeah, and this is, that's why, if anybody ever tells you those rubber strips running across the road, just kind of don't believe. So, other than that, I'm done, if you guys are happy?
Thank you, Julian. Yeah. Anybody else for public comment period? Harold?
Harold Weitler, 1207 Jamison. Back on the library. You know, I really wonder how many of you people on the council have actually talked to people about this? Have you contacted them? Have you knocked on any doors? How many people have come to you? I have knocked doors, and I haven't got them canvassed, but I've heard an awful lot on the street. I would say that probably 90% that I've heard people say thumbs down. "We don't want it. We've got a good library." I use the library out here quite prickly, and I like it. The people out there, they're real good. In fact, I just checked a book out two weeks ago, and I used to ask the question, "Do we have that book here?" They looked, "Yes, we do." Next thing I knew, here it is in front of me. Couldn't ask for any better service than that. These people have worked real hard out there to build this library after we've got. We've got lots of room out there for expansion. We can afford to give Mount Vernon $50,000 here not too long ago for a swimming pool, so to speak, the YMCA, but we can't afford to build a library. While we've got the ground out there, it doesn't matter if we expand the building. Parking, there's plenty of parking around the area there, get parking lot. I've never seen any problem with parking out there, even when there's this event going at the community center. But I would challenge each one of you people on the council to get out and talk to your constituents. Ask them what they think. Don't wait for them to come to you. Ask them. Most people have got the idea of what goods they're gonna do to talk to you. You ain't gonna pay attention to what I gotta say. You're gonna vote your way. Keep in mind, the people that voted for you is the ones you're properly representing. You're not representing you, 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 and you. You're representing the whole people in your district. That's what your job is. It isn't what I like. I set up here, I know what it's like to have people sitting there bitching at you. I didn't like it too well myself at the time, but by the time they go home and think about what I heard, I guess you're right. The thing is, you represent the people, not yourself. You don't represent you, you don't represent administration. You represent the people. And until you people figure this out, our system is very poor. But I would challenge you to contact the people in your district, find out what they want. Do they want to turn our library over and give it to the county, or do they want to keep it home? Now, I've heard some bad news about when they built this new library, the old Carnegie, down across from such a high school that Jim is right now.
About 30 seconds, Harold.
I may need a little more on that. But that library that we had before, you could stick it in this building here and have room for basketball. It was nothing. They sold us this school, moved down there where they're at now, and built us a real good number-one library. Ready? Been here for a while, I could create some expansion. And I say, well, you've got plenty of room to do it, and if we can afford to give $50,000 to Mount Vernon for the YMCA, we can certainly put that money to work here for our citizens.
Thank you, Harold. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public comment period. Harold?
Hi, Carl DeYoung, resident of 1030 Warner Street, and I am here to talk about potholes. We have had an incredible winter, and now we're having a wonderful spring come, and I wanted to talk about the potholes on Talke in the 800 block. If we could spend some time looking at that, I think, I'm sorry, it would take away business from some local alignment places and tire places, but we do have some need there. Additionally, the drain seems to be plugged on the southwest corner of Ethan State. That seems to be a long-term problem that people are aware of, and I was just thinking if that could be put on the priority list, that would help out my neighborhood. Thank you. Secondly, the library. I wanted to thank the council, and the mayor specifically, for the transparency and accessibility over the past year of listening to constituents like myself, always being able to take a phone call, and always available when we run across each other at a community event, or just on the street, or places of worship. So thank you for your accessibility and your transparency, and also your financial responsibility for this project. We wouldn't want to conflate projects with projects, in that we have FAQ in the back that specifically addresses these financial issues that keep popping up. And then finally, as was brought out in the first commentator about wayfinding, I use the Cascade Trail, or Rails to Trails, frequently, and when I'm heading west, it seems to end here on, right here. And the other day, I ran across some folks visiting that were cycling down from concrete, and they were wondering where they needed to go to continue on the trail, because they had plans of heading to Mount Vernon. And I literally walked with them to get to the next section. So, it would be neat if we had some sort of wayfinding device there to help folks out, and thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. My name is Hergy Anderson, 928 Beachley Road, and I'd like to say that I don't think we have anything to thank you guys for any sort of transparency in this matter. If it had been transparent in this matter, we wouldn't be standing here a year later. You guys would have taken this for a vote four years ago, and whether that would have been a yes or a no, we would have had the answer. But you guys have not been listening to the people in Sidro-Woolley, and you have not even bothered to listen to any of them, matter of fact. And as I said in the closing words in my opinion page today, we still would like to see how this project is supposed to look like, what it's supposed to cost, and where it's supposed to be located. We don't know anything. And since we have been denied the vote for a year, I think it's time to step up and say, yes, we are going to let the citizens of Sidro-Woolley vote on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Hergy. Anybody else? You don't get two shots, Harold.
Yep. I'm not even gonna mention the word "library."
You don't get two shots, you get one. So just sit down.
I'm not gonna even mention the word "library."
I don't care. Just sit down.
You may not, but I do.
Harold? Are you getting...
People in council, remember what your job is.
At this time, I'm gonna adjourn the council, we'll go back into the room and tell Harold can compose himself. I run the meeting, you don't.
I thought it was a free country. I told you I was not gonna mention "library."
It has nothing to do with that. You get one by public comment.
You have another project.
Okay. I'm gonna dismiss the council to executive and tell Harold can take his seat and abide by the rules.
Counsel, I apologize for being a problem to you. Blame you.
Are you done then?
Okay. Let's continue. Is there anybody else who has not spoken yet that would like to speak? Okay, at this time, I will close the public comment. There's no public comment. Unfinished business, item five, proposed comprehensive plan amendments on the 2017 amended docket. This is a third reading, and it's on page 72 of your packets.
Alright, so that's me. I apologize for bringing this back to the council shortly after the council approved the comprehensive plan docket items last meeting. We discovered that there was one additional item that should be on there, and that is amendments to the transportation element of the comp plan to address the Skagit Council of Government's comments on the transportation element. There are fairly minor comments to be addressed, that it's really more of an administrative thing, but it does have to go through the process and public hearing. So, staff requests that we include that sixth item on the comprehensive plan agenda for 2017. And so the motion would be just to make a motion to approve the items one through six for the comp plan.
So, is the page number incorrect? Because on 72, I'm seeing a labor and equipment rate sheet, note one. Very well. So what's your pleasure, council?
I want to make a motion to approve items one through six for inclusion of the 2017 comprehensive plan docket.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Olen. To approve items one through six on the 2017 comprehensive plan docket. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion carries. Thank you very much. And, let's see, we had a late material that I skipped by, I guess I should get back to that. Should've gone right after consent calendar, which was an access agreement. Aaron, this is yours.
So, the city council authorized, was it the last meeting? Might have been the last meeting that we proceed with grant application with Ecology to do some environmental investigation out there at 109 Jamison. And with that was the access agreement. It was a little unclear in my memory, and also in the minutes as to whether you specifically approved the access agreement, which gives us the ability to have our consultant go on the property and actually drill the test pits and do the phase-two environmental work. So, that's signed, the grant application's been submitted, it's now before you for ratification, just so we can be sure to dot our i's and cross our t's. So that's what I'm looking for, is a motion to ratify the access agreement for the city to access 109 Jamison Street.
I make a motion to ratify...
The access agreement.
The access agreement on 109 Jamison Street.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Cornigan, seconded by Councilmember Sandstrom to ratify the access agreement for 109 Jamison Street. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And it carries.
So that grant application is in. We've requested $120,000. Our understanding is Ecology has relaxed the spending timeframe, so before we were looking at 100% expenditure by June 30, 2017. It sounds like we'll have a little bit more time, which is good, because the scope of work is a little bit broader. It was gonna be tough for them to complete in, you know, a two-month or two-and-a-half month period, so we should know more by the next council meeting as to whether those funds will be awarded. And I suppose it might be more for the public than for you. Just a reminder, this was a grant that funds 100% of the costs, so there is no city money in this project, other than our staff time to help support it.
Okay. Item six is an ordinance establishing the crime for the misuse of the 911 system. This is a second reading, it's on your packets, page 73 through 75.
They said there were no changes from the last reading to this reading. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Well, I just want to clarify, this is, it'll truly be for those calls that are a nuisance, correct? It's not going to become, kind of shaking the finger at everybody who calls 911 when it's a mistake or whatever?
No, no, mistakes are not an issue. And, you know, I was using the example at our staff meeting yesterday. If you've got somebody who's calling, and they probably don't need to, but they really think that they do, you know, that's a different issue. You know, what we're trying to get at here is somebody who is intentionally misusing the system. So, you know, the examples I gave are probably the... So, you know, the examples I gave are probably the best, you know, just those recent two scenarios of dialing 911 because they, somebody wanted a ride or dialing 911 to falsely report a medical emergency in order to get the restroom facilities unlocked at Hammer. You know, those, I think, are solid examples. The vast majority of our calls, and we, we have what, about maybe 12,000 calls, 14,000 calls? Or you have about, you have about 10, don't you?
Yeah, we're about 10,000 generated calls, but that doesn't cover everything that we get.
We're over two. So, you know, we're getting at least a good 12,000 calls a year to, well, I should say those would be dispatch calls to our responders for service. Oftentimes, those represent multiple calls from citizens to 911. So, this is not a huge problem. You know, this is a law that's intended to address a small problem, but it's a serious enough problem that it seemed to warrant some action. And the seriousness is the idea that we're, we've got somebody intentionally pulling emergency services out of availability for the real call that could come in. Because we'll treat it like a real call, because we'll assume that it is until all those resources are there. In the meantime, they're allocated to the call for the time between dispatch and determining that it's not real. And we often have stacked calls, so that means there's a diminished response to call two or call three in the same time period while they're trying to figure out if it's real or not. And that's what this is intended to address, is the ability to go to that person and say, you know what, don't do that. You know, it's gonna start like most of these things do with that conversation, you know? Don't do that, or else here's what will happen. And then repeated abuse is gonna result in the possibility of prosecution in the municipal court.
We're not looking at a United Airlines response to this.
Are there any other questions? So, the next ordinance is 1876-TAC-17, and that is on page seventy?
Three. Three. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1876-17, an ordinance establishing the crime of, the crime of misusing the 911 system.
Second it.
Motion made by council member Sandstrom, seconded by council member Johnson, to adopt ordinance 1876 hyphen seventeen, an ordinance establishing the crime of the misuse of the 911 system. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carries unanimously. Next, new business, item seven in your packet, page seventy-six, interlocal services agreement with the Central Skagit Rural Partial County Library District for reciprocal library borrowing. And our chairman, Dr. Holland, do you want to address this, please?
So, yeah, we've been discussing this.
I don't think your mic is on or you're not talking into it. Hello? There you go. And please let the public know who you are.
My name's Tim Holland, and I live at 26203 Mink Road. So, we've been discussing reciprocity with the Central Skagit Library District, and I have a short report of the different concerns and potential benefits of reciprocity. First, for the concerns. The city library has insufficient funding, staffing, and a lack of ability to buy sufficient copies of popular titles to deal with an influx of new patrons without compromising the service to city residents. There will be long waiting lists for new books, staff will be overworked, and there is no plan to increase funding to help with these problems. The comments were, the time is not right. Neither building, neither our city building nor the Skagit District Library building is of adequate size to handle a large influx of new patrons. Reciprocity does not benefit the Cedar Valley Library. We give up a valuable bargaining chip before negotiations are completed. Both libraries may be overwhelmed and run out of books. There was a fair amount of argument as to whether that's really a problem or not. Benefits. Reciprocity now will begin the process of cooperatively working with our neighbors to improve library services for all residents of our school district community. The problem of books in high demand can be handled cooperatively with the district using their economic ability to purchase sufficient copies of special books and referral between libraries. You know, let, if our, if one library is out of the book, they can send people down to the other one. Increased funding is unlikely to occur unless we can prove the necessity by demonstrating increased usage by the community. And hopefully, if the city library becomes overwhelmed, yes, maybe the city council can find funds for that. There is evidence of declining library use nationally. Cooperative reciprocity may well encourage greater numbers of patrons reading books. The district library is working with the school district to provide service to school children over the summer, which will hopefully reduce the summer slump often noted in students. I don't know if you're aware of that, but you know, after a summer, the school will spend two to three months of the next year trying to get the kids back to the point where they were when they left in the spring. And if we can keep them reading over the summer, doing various programs, we can hopefully reduce that time lag. The bookmobile will be an important part of this effort, but right now, city children would not have access to this important service. Reciprocity will solve this issue. They do tend to be stopping at the schools during the school lunch programs that go on during the summer, and they're gonna hopefully have the bookmobile there at those sites and try to get kids to borrow books when they're there eating lunch. Then I have an interesting quote here. Books are welcome assiduous companions, always ready to appear in public or to go back in their box at your command, always disposed to speak or be silent, to stay at home or to make a visit to the woods, to travel or to abide in the country, to gossip, to joke, advise you, reprove you, and take care of you, to teach you the world's secrets, the records of great deeds, the rules of life, the scorn of death, moderation in good fortune, fortitude in ill, calmness in constancy in behavior. These are learned, happy, useful, and ready-spoken companions who will never bring you tedium, expense, lamentation, jealous murmurs, or deception. This was a statement by Patriarch in the 1340s. I think we can lose sight of what we are trying to accomplish with this library partnership and reciprocity. We are trying to get as many books in the hands of as many people as possible. That will help us handle any problems that come by along in the process. And this was, this recommendation or this resolution was passed by the library district. The vote was three to two, but you've heard the different comments that were made during that discussion. Are there any questions?
I don't hear any questions for Dr. Holland and for people in the audience. Dr. Holland is the chairman of our library board. So, on pages seventy-seven is the library board's resolution one, tac seventeen, and the recommended motion for council tonight is on page seventy-six. And you all know my opinion, so. Thank you, Dr. Holland. Were there any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached interlocal agreement with the Central Skagit Rural Partial County Library District authorizing reciproco between the city's library and the district library.
Second.
The motion was made by council member Sandstrom and seconded by council member Carnegie to approve the attached interlocal agreements with the Central Skagit Rural Partial County Library District authorizing reciprocity between the city's library and the district library. Any further discussion?
I just have a quick comment. Due to the concerns of new patrons, I think Calga says it best that we are already serving that population, so I think the demand is probably unlikely to increase. I think we're serving those people. To personal experience, I could say, going to storytime on a weekly basis, I would say half those families were out of city residents using our library. It didn't burden our librarians in any way. As having, excuse me, as of having books fly off the shelf, I think that's a great problem for a library to have. Really, that's the sole purpose, I think, of having a library. I was just in Chicago over spring break and I went to the Chicago Public Library downtown and I saw their mission statement and I was pretty enamored with that library. It was a huge glorious building, but they, their mission statement starts with, "We welcome and support all people for the enjoyment of reading in pursuit of lifelong learning." And I think that's what we're here to do, is fulfill that in all aspects of life, especially here in our library, so.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And it carries unanimously. Next up, item eight, committee reports, starting with Chief Tucker.
Just a couple of things here. We have four people in training this week. We had the opportunity to send our three sergeants candidates that are vying for the promotion that's coming up to Mount Vernon to Sergeants Academy. Most of us have gone to it. Excellent leadership training experience and just cheap. We just, they just get a commute to Mount Vernon. We also have one more in a week-long training, Brian Hull, is at SWAT training right now in Richland, I think. And that's a, he said it was one week long, but it's 66 hours of training, so I think they cram a lot of time, a lot of training into a little bit of time. Hopefully, we get him back not too banged up and wore out, but we're looking forward to getting him on the SWAT team. We also had two officers that were recognized by the Washington State Traffic Safety Commission. Officer Hannah Walt and Officer Eddie for their work on a couple of the driving enforcement activities that we got to do at the end of 2016. Officer Eddie actually stopped a car, recognized a problem in the car. Two older gentlemen had a 13-year-old girl with them and they were headed to a motel, and he recognized a serious problem going on there, got the girl taken out of that situation and got into protective custody. Officer Hannah Walt, I swear that guy can smell somebody driving on a suspended license or with a warrant, and he ends up getting in chases, pursuits, and he got acknowledged for chasing down a serious problem driver on one of those and hunting the guy to the ground and getting him arrested. And just their general activity, they've been just really, really, I guess, pushing the limits of our people to keep up with their paperwork. We've got, we've been doing a distracted driving emphasis since the beginning of the month. Probably see a lot of traffic enforcement going on, especially this last weekend was our big time. The state gave us extra money for overtime to stop cars, and really, it's those people that are driving around texting and talking on cellphones. I've stopped seven cars myself just in the last week, watching people drive by, doing their little thing on there. And every one of them's been really pleasant, really polite, and they said, "I knew I was doing something bad." And the one lady's phone was under her brake pedal where she'd thrown it, and it was still ringing while the person she was talking to said, "Is everything okay?" But, so you'll see a lot of traffic enforcement going on regular until the end of the month. And I also made it kind of a competition. I'd buy somebody dinner, whoever did the most stops. We're not writing a lot of tickets on these except for during the emphasis, but we're getting the word out and just getting people to recognize how dangerous this is. You may have seen some activity at 802 Metcalf Street or heard something about that. We had information from the detectives that they got advised of a rather serious registered sex offender that had moved into that location. When we looked at that location, we found that that wasn't a residence, it was a business. And Aaron came down with the mayor and building department. We got Tony involved and got to looking, and there's, there was some illegal modifications done to the building to make it residences. Offices will be used as apartments, and it was completely outside the realm of reasonable. We got a red tag and everybody was really cooperative in moving out. And then we got code enforcement keeping an eye on the problem. And we've talked to the owner and the manager. There's one business up there. Bob Ruby has his business office up there, so there is one legitimate tenant up there, but there were like six or seven other apartments up there, six other apartments that people were living in. And it was, there were no bathrooms. There was a communal bathroom in the kitchen that they made, and it was not prop, the fire department did their investigation of it. It wasn't a safe place for them to stay. So, we corrected that and we actually, the best part of it, we got a registered sex offender to move back to where he came from. Yeah, and he was a pretty bad one. And for those that didn't know, we're doing another cleanup at the Carl Strom resting spot out at the cemetery. Harold was part of getting that put together way back in the day. Was that in the 1800s? No, that was, that was this, it wasn't that long ago. But Officer Wilson, she's gonna go out there this weekend. They're gonna do a little bit of cleanup. It really looks good from the last time we got, did a cleanup on that, and it, but they're gonna do a little sprucing up and, you know, raking and doing some cleanup again. And if you see a morning band on our officers' badges this weekend, that's what it's for. It's just in recognition of his passing on April 15, 1933.
And that's gonna, that's posted on the city website, too.
There you go.
It posts to that forum.
And the final thing I have is, I'm gonna be on vacation. Sergeant Harrison and I are gonna take off on a quick trip to visit Family Farm back in Missouri, and he and I are gonna go turkey hunting. Haven't been hunting since the 80s, so I don't know if I'm gonna do much hunting, but I may sit around the campfire and have fun. But we're gonna have Sergeant McElwae covering my duties during that time. He's gonna be working kind of a split shift. Detective Eaton will be around, and Sergeant Blunt, she works day, so we're gonna be well covered. And I think Aaron was a little hesitant when I said we were both gonna take off, but he saw the look in our eyes and we needed to go on vacation, and that's all I have.
Plus, he's been keeping a turkey decoy in the office and moving it around, so, you know?
It's actually true.
Thank you, chief. Council have anything for the chief? They've been busy and they've been doing great things. Appreciate it. And I know Dean's been busy because I've been listening to the radios.
The only thing I really have to bring up tonight, Mary, is we, in council, we've been running short of an engine here for the last probably three to four weeks. We had one of our engines blow one of the seals on the pump shaft, and it seems every time we put it into pump gear, we were filling the transmission with water. That makes it really tough to drive, so it, it had to go down to Q Alp where they had to drop the pump and the transmission to repair all that. We're notified that we should get it back this week, so we're very happy to get that back and put it into service. Also, we're getting, we're still testing for outside volunteer residents, so if anybody knows that somebody getting ready to graduate high school that wants to start their job in the fire service, this is a great place to go. We're, we're down about three, and we know we're gonna be down one more who's buying, which is good, he's buying a house in town and is gonna be staying locally, but we're starting to hurt a little bit on the young guys that live in quarters, so we need bodies. No, Nathan, no, he's busy.
Thank you. John?
Well, this is the time, time of the year where we do our annual reports to the Office of Financial Management for, that's Washington State, estimates for April, what they call the April 1st official population estimate, so every year, every year at this time, we report how many building permits we've had, how many demolition permits, and do a survey of the mobile home parks and the group living quarters such as some of the senior housing and job corps. So, about to find out how many people the city has grown by. I'm really curious because we've had a lot of building permits over the past couple of years, so expecting a little bump, which isn't... years, so expecting a little bump, which isn't really that terribly exciting. But it is, in the planning department, we like to see some growth and that's good for the city. The only problem we might foresee is since Job Corps is closed, there's now zero people at Job Corps, so it might look like people are deserting town because there's not a lot of people staying up there right now. So we'll get that done this week. And Aaron already reported that on the State Travel Response Program Environmental Assessment Grant, so that's all I've got.
Thank you, John. Anybody have anything? Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Last council work session, you approved a grant application under the Economic Development Program from Skagit County. I just wanted to report out, I haven't quite finished my estimate on that, but it looks like that's going to be about a $535,000 project. The match for that will be provided from GMA impact fees as you've already approved. There should be more than enough that come in from the Gateway Plaza project to cover that, and so we'll be submitting that on Friday. I also wanted to let you know, I wasn't watching the calendar quite carefully enough. You might have noticed I was busy getting ready with the work, this session tonight with the four items that were on the agenda. But I neglected to get to you the other grant opportunities that are due on that same day and so I wanted to list those for you and ask your authorization to submit those requests. I'll give them to you one at a time so Patsy can write them down. The first one, these are, three of these are through the Council of Governments, they're the Service Transportation Program U.S. funds that they manage for us, for the county. They have $5 million available. These grants are for projects that would not take place until 2021 or '2. So they're not an immediate thing, but they put us in line for that. At times, the county, or excuse me, at times, previously approved grants do not move forward as fast in construction as they propose and when that happens, these projects can move up if they're ready to go. So it's important to get into the queue on these. The first one is the main grant itself under that program. What we're proposing to do is resubmit the SR20, SR9 North Township Intersection Improvements, which you saw two years ago. There was a previous call, a special call under this same program that we submitted this project for. We ranked second. They only funded one project due to the size of the number-one ranked project. So this project should rank very well. It is one of the projects that was identified as a priority in the Swift Center EIS due to intersection capacity. Anyone who drives through that intersection at the rush hour in the evening knows that it queues up quite a ways out Highway 20 towards Fruitdale. And that's the issue that we're seeking to rectify with this grant. We would add a turn lane to the westbound lane and the southbound lane and the northbound lane, basically to allow that intersection to function better. The estimate for that project in, two years ago, was $1 million. The match at 13.5% is $135,000. I imagine when I get into the details, the estimate will go up slightly, but that's the first of the ones that I'll seek your permission to submit. Also, under that same call, they are setting aside 10% of the funds, which is about $500,000 for non-motorized projects. We have the next phase in our SR20 Cascade Trail West project. We're calling it 2A, which would go from the one that we're building, that you ordered earlier tonight, which goes from Hodgins to Trail. And the next section would go from Hodgins on to the west to across Brickyard Creek. I'm not sure how far I can get with that one, I haven't completed the estimate on it yet, but I'm estimating it'll be about a $400,000 project. Again, a 13.5% match at $54,000, which we would use a combination of GMA impact fee funds and also if we design it ourselves, we'll have some salaries to put into the mix and then also TBD funds for that. And I have been, by the way, identifying these projects. These are all on our TBD and our transportation plan list of projects. These are all included in that. So that's the second project. It would be Cascade Trail West Phase 2A, Hodgins to Holt Camp is the other end of that project. The third one, also under that same program, once again, they're looking for a contingency list in case projects for some reason get canceled or don't move forward. And for this particular contingency call, they're prioritizing planning projects, which is a good thing to do because as I've said in this venue many times, having these projects designed and well-planned certainly puts you very far forward in the queue when the calls come for these programs. What we're proposing to do, as you know, our Jones-John Liner Trail Road Corridor Project is our next major emphasis in the city to provide that alternative route to Highway 20 along the Jones-John Liner section. You have already approved $100,000 from the Transportation Benefit Fund for this year to start that effort. I believe I mentioned that I didn't think $100,000 was enough for that, so I would like to take the opportunity of applying for $200,000 under this program. The match for that is 0.135, again, $27,000. We would be able to use your already-approved TBD funds for match for that, so there's no additional match approval required. But that's the project that I would propose to take forward. All three of those are due on April the 26th, as I mentioned, and so I will need to submit those before council meeting that night. There's one other project I would like to throw into the mix. This one we just received last week. It's from the Transportation Improvement Board. We've been very good to the city over the years. They have, at the behest of the governor's office, put together an emergency pavement repair program. We've been talking about potholes, you heard that from the audience tonight. And that's happened pretty much statewide. And so the TIB has put forth a call for projects up to $50,000 per project that are for such things as digouts where these boil up and failures have happened. It is limited to arterial streets. When I first looked at this, we mostly got arterial streets planned for doing the overlay projects, but Nathan came to my office this morning after we discussed this yesterday at staff meeting and he's identified a pretty good shopping list of projects that we think will qualify for this. So we would like to go ahead and apply for that as well. It's $50,000, the match is 10% or $5,000. We can make that easily within our existing arterial maintenance budget as long as you authorize us to submit that grant request. That one's not due until May the 31st, but Aaron pointed out to me this morning that it does state in the fine print that it's first come, first served. So we would like to go ahead and get that one put together and submit that in the next week or two. So there are the four projects that I would like your authorization to complete and submit the grant applications on and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mark? So you may have to help me through these. Not sure I captured everything. So the first motion that we're looking for is to approve an application for the State Route 20, State Route 9 North Township Intersection Improvements.
Correct. That's through the STP US is the acronym for that.
Anyone care to move to?
Sure, I'll move that we authorize this middle of the grant request for that. STP US.
Okay, a motion was made by council member Judith, then seconded by council member Lomley to approve application for State Route 9, State Route 20 North Township Intersection Improvements. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, if I have it correct, is State Route 20 Cascade Trail Phase 2A. I have a motion by council member Johnson, second by council member Carnegie to approve application for the State Route 20 Cascade Trail West Phase 2A. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Third is the Jones-John Liner Corridor Design Project. Is that correct, Mark?
I would call it the Jones-John Liner Trail Road Corridor Scoping Project.
Trail Road.
Corridor.
Corridor Scoping Project.
Is that a case of what he said?
Yeah.
A motion by council member Lomley and second by council member Johnson to approve application for the Jones-John Liner Trail Road Corridor Scoping Project. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And lastly, in reference to the governor's emergency pavement repair program for arterial streets, you got a good title for that one, Mark?
I'm just calling it the TIB Emergency Pavement Repair Project.
Oh, just that.
TIB Emergency Pavement Repair Project. I have a motion.
Second.
By council member Johnson, a second by council member Carnegie to approve the TIB Emergency Pavement Repair Project. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks for nothing, Mark, but there you go.
Well, I just dialed myself in with a very busy week and a half. I've already been busy, but that will.
No, we're happy to see the improvements, especially those emergency pavement repairs because I think we're going to be busy doing those. Anything else? Aaron?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide an update on a couple of projects. The first is the Senior Center Air Conditioning. Council member Owen was in the building today to ask some questions, thought I'd provide a report to the full council. So you may recall that the 2017 budget includes $35,000, $35,000 to make those improvements. Nathan went through the process of the pre-bid work to try to develop a scope and we got to the point of actually getting the project out to bid here last week. We chose to pull the project because the information we're getting from our contractors, our potential bidders, is that there was a lack of comfort that they could actually achieve our desired solution. So the scope had become curtailed to the point where we were looking at the addition of a couple of mini-split systems in the main room and they weren't sure it was going to actually effectively cool it. So we thought it made sense to step back and think about this. The worst-case scenario in my mind is to spend $35,000 to install something that costs the city more money every month and doesn't achieve the desired outcome. We went back into the building, went up into the attic, looked under the building and just trying to think through how this problem has developed, why that building's hot and, for example, the community center is not on the exact same day. And it sure seemed to those of us who are not trained that the large expanse of southern-facing windows without any reflective protection as well as the absolutely clear skylights are probably significant contributors. We thought, well, maybe we ought to look into that a bit more. So Nathan's talked to a local architect and the question we're posing is, could we use that same money possibly to put in low-E treatment on the southern face, replace the entire skylight structure with something that would not let the heat in but continue to have some decent light and possibly relamp all of the lights with LED, you know, cooler bulbs? Would be possible maybe to achieve something closer to what we're trying to get at with the same money and have our costs go down every month rather than go up. We don't know if that'll work, but that was the purpose in taking a step back is to kind of go back and reconsider our assumptions. I think when this project was first born, you know, at least in my mind, I imagined there'd be some sort of an air conditioning unit that would hook into the existing ducting system and like this building, the building would be a particular temperature. That really was not realistic from the pre-bid work that Nathan did with the contractors he was looking at. So that's where we're at. The project is certainly not canceled. We're not spending the money in Mount Vernon. We're just trying to ensure that we get the best bang for our buck and probably most importantly, that we believe that the project will actually address the goal. So that's an update on that. On the library side of things, of course, I've been very busy working with attorneys on draft contracts and we're continuing to follow up on the council's action from a couple of meetings ago, working on those documents and hope to be able to get you something in the not-too-distant future. The library had a resignation today. One of our longstanding employees is moving over to the district library at the end of April. So I authorized the hiring of an additional temporary employee, just like we did with the last librarian who moved over to the district, to ensure that we don't short-staff our library, you know, particularly during this transition time where we're trying to figure out how everything's going to work. So, you know, looking for a new face at the Seadruly Public Library. I think the new children's librarian starts this week and this next hire we're trying to expedite so there's no gap. But lots going on as we continue to kind of move that project forward and work on some of these other issues. And that's it for me tonight.
Any questions, counsel? Patsy?
On pages 83 to 85 of your packet is a joint report from Chief Klinger and myself on fire transports, specifically basic life support transports and our ambulances. On page 84 is a report from the fire department showing the number of transports since we began charging. We've always had a transport here and there to help out our friends at Central Valley, but since we officially started transporting, you can see the steep increase in transports here the last half of the report. When you turn the page to page 85, down the bottom half, you can see some different colors. Those represent the money. The red are the charges. One thing we've discovered is that the majority, I mean, the extreme majority of transports are for people on Medicare or Medicaid. When you contract with those entities, you are required to write off a significant amount of money. In this chart, which is prepared by the billing company, the medical billing company we use, the blue cylinders are what's disallowed. Basically, 44% of the allowable charges are disallowed by these government insurances. And some people have, you know, it takes a while to collect, I should say, because some people have supplemental insurance and then some people do a private pay after that. And as long as people keep making payments to systems design or if they say, "Can I do a payment plan because, you know, my social security's only so much," they continue to collect. And you can see in the green the amount of payments we've received for each of these months. And this is just over the last 12 months, just to give you a snapshot there. Some of these insurances take some time to pay. We don't always have the correct medical insurance to start with, the people have the wrong card with them or, you know, it just takes a while. And then unfortunately, when people get to a certain point of they just don't pay, then they come back to us and we refer them onto collections. So as of this point in time, the city's received $86,000 in payments and we've reserved, referred, excuse me, approximately $7,000 in debt over to collections. And then we still have some pending. And then we still have some pending ones that they're sort of in limbo. But I just wanted you to see kind of the snapshot, what it looks like. We're not making millions, but I believe we're providing a valuable service to the citizens of Cedar Valley.
Go ahead, Mark.
This collection is new to the city, right?
We've used the same collection company...
Well, not collections as in default, but like in, I mean, collecting on transports, like billing for transports.
Oh, that's only been since July of 2015.
So it's new to the city, like...
New to the city, right.
But what's also changed is prior transports were really only in very, you know, occasional circumstances. So it would be a motor vehicle accident with three patients, and you've got Med 1 and Med 4 here, the red bus, you know, Dean's crew would take one, you know, and I don't know, would that happen a couple times a year?
Yeah, at the most, a couple times a year that it would take place. It was very rare.
So in that scenario, you would be the guy wanting to say, hey, can I get in the red one? But what's changed is we're now, we're now taking on that primary transport role for BLS calls. So the ALS unit still comes and provides an ALS assessment, but the expectation is that we're going to take the patient. Our staff have trained significantly to do the electronic patient care reporting. They're following similar, but, you know, more detailed protocols. So the model shifted with that expectation that we're also having to staff a little differently. And before, we could easily have some first responders on duty. We're now staffing to ensure that our BLS-licensed rig has the minimum of two ENTs on duty. So a little shift in the way the department works to ensure we can provide that service for which we're billing.
And I guess, just to put a dot on that, I, and I think I talked about this last time, our department received from the Skagit County Medical Services Officer a letter commending them on how well and how quickly they have adapted and got the system. So their performance is meeting or exceeding all the other performers in the valley, and that's a really great thing to hear. So it's working.
It is. And just since we've been sitting here tonight, we, in this meeting, we transported two more. So it's, the guys are busy.
Yeah, that's great. Anything else, Patsy?
Does that, can I just ask Dean, how does that change the dynamic for our, because it seems like the, you know, the slope is there. What is the future demand for our fire department? Like, is there going to be a burden in the future that we're going to have to tackle?
The need or the response isn't going to change. We're still going to get called out whether we transport the person or not. We're still going to get called for that same call. So the amount of calls is going to continue to increase. I think when I started with Harold back in, we won't say when, but anyways, I can remember we had, there was about 200 to 300 calls a year, and we had no idea how we were going to continue to meet those needs. We're running close to 2,500 calls now a year, and those levels are just going to continue to increase. At some point in time, the city's going to have to step up and put on the big-boy pants, and we're going to end up paying a lot of money and probably getting some more staffing. There's two paid people for this department and a lot of part-timers, and we're running ragged a little bit. So we'll continue to do the best job we can with what we have on hand. These guys that you have working for you right now, if you see them on the street, you need to pat them on the back and tell them good job because these are probably some of the best in the county that are in here doing this job, doing these transports. And it's just going to continue to grow, but they continue to grow too. Because what this does for them is they're now becoming so marketable that they're doing this, that they're actually sought after to get hired on in full-time departments away from Cedar Valley. And that's a good thing, but it's a bad thing for us, so.
And we have in our 2017 budget, an addition of a third full-time employee in the Fire Department, an Assistant Chief of Operations. In fact, it was in our 2016 budget too, and we held off on making the hire in 2016. You know, again, we're just naturally very cautious about city finances. We're getting more comfort, I think, with the idea that we may be ready to push that button mid-2017 and bring that person on board, both because we're getting some comfort on the budget side, but also a recognition that the call volume really is increasing, and we're going to have to do something to provide additional support for that department. So that's already in the budget. We'll keep you posted as we, as we move forward on that possibility.
Okay, thank you. Judith?
Hmm, anybody missing a ferret?
Not me, but I've got an extra guinea pig here if you want a friend for the ferrets.
Well, I've got a peacock that's moved into my neighborhood.
Oh, my, they're noisy.
It is.
Okay, that's one I wasn't expecting, but anything else, Judith?
Uh, no, I'm just living, you know, for the weekend and then tax day, so.
Excellent. Jermaine?
I just wanted to bring up the Have a Heart Run. That's on the 29th of this month. And I guess you can register at the Community Action website if you have teams or whatever. It starts at 8:15 in the morning. It's going to be at Ed Water Park. It's a fundraiser, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Julie?
Just want to wish everybody a happy Easter, happy Passover.
Chuck?
Yes. I just want to thank the Chief Tucker and his crew for finding a part-time job for my friend, Mr. Sutton. He'd become quite a nuisance down at the Senior Center. He was there shortly after the doors opened, and he stayed till quite a while after lunch. And he enjoyed taking a bath in the men's room. Ellen didn't know quite what to do with him, and I talked to one of your officers and said she could, you know, get him for trespassing. But anyway, you solved the problem for Ellen, so thank your people very much. And also, Erin must have told Mr. Anderson about her air conditioning deal because he knew all about it, so you get the word around.
Not me.
No.
Mary was right there, since she probably just talked a little bit. A lot of you people may not know Frank Martin. He's a longtime Cedar Valley resident, well, the '60s anyway, but very behind-the-scenes activist for activities here in this town. 50 years with Lager Rodeo. He and his wife Beverly started the Cedar Valley Senior Crime Watch Program, and just a lot of things that he did that people don't know. He passed away last week. His family's going to have a memorial service for him on Saturday, the 29th, at 11 o'clock at the chapel for that. But the kind of guy that, big smile on his face, big bear hug kind of guy, but one of those behind-the-scenes kind of guys that you don't see, that's always there, pushing you along to get her done. So if you know his daughter, Jeannie, give her condolences and that. Nice guy. Just think everybody should have known Frank. He's just one of those kind of guys you just like to have in your presence. The other half, most...
Okay, thanks, Brett.
No, I've worked with Frank on the Lager Rodeo board for several years, and it's a shame. He was a good guy, and I'll miss him.
Okay, thanks. So first, Harold, I want to apologize if I handled you roughly. I think it might have been a little confusing because, Harold, he came up twice. And I'm not going to allow that again. If you're not here, you can bring written stuff to the council, but I don't, you don't get to speak for somebody else because I'm taking that to the most illogical misuse. There'd be somebody who wrote 50 letters reading them, and I'm not going to have that. So if I had let somebody do it before, shame on me. I won't let that happen again. And, Harold, I'm sorry I had to step on you. You know, you've served the city a lot, but I apologize for that, but I got to run this thing exactly the same, otherwise people will abuse it.
I understand that the city council was to me to find out people watch. If people stand up and want to tell you something, I think that you should come this way.
Well, you can come to my office at any time, any day, and talk to me.
We covered this several weeks ago. I know your office, if you remember.
I do not, but, so, my comments are tonight. I want to talk about what we've done in the past that's now here in the future with us. Hauser Park and Tejerick Field are up and running. Full-speed kids out there playing soccer, playing baseball. I want to thank the council for having some foresight. There was a time when the purchase of Hauser Field was considered the worst thing we could do and a terrible idea. Well, look at it now. It's beautiful, and the kids are out there playing. Also, one of our young men, Reed Trammell, who's a pitcher for our baseball team, pitched a no-hitter and made the front page. That's a very rare achievement, so we've got some great kids out there in the community. And, and by the ways, without objection, we stand adjourned.